Public meeting and this is for July 2024. And so I just want to welcome you that are online as well as you that are in the audience. And so want to call this to order right now. And so, Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, sir. First item on the agenda is invocation and I'd like to invite Director of Transportation and Dean of Students Chris Jury Ford for the invocation, please. Please stand.
Please bow our heads. Dear heavenly Father, Lord, we just come to you, Lord, with thanks, Lord, for this opportunity to meet, Lord, and we just ask that you continue your blessings and grace upon our students, their families, our faculty and families, our community, our state and nation, Lord. We're so thankful for all that you do for us. And, Lord, we just humbly ask that to have your way with this meeting, Lord, and lead, guide these board members and Miss Diller as they're making decisions for our students and our school system. And, Lord, we just thank you and we love you and we appreciate you. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Please remain standing while Deputy Sirianni comes forward to lead us in the pledge.
Our pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with every and just as one.
Thank you. You may be seated. Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is to approve the consent agenda. We'll ask Ms. Collis if she'll pull up the meetings. There's two sets of meetings, one for the called meeting on 6/13/2024 for budgetary purposes and the other one for 6/13/2024 that was the regular minutes. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I make a recommendation to approve this presented.
Board, we have a recommendation. Do I have a motion?
Oh, move.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor by a raised hand? It is unanimous.
Thank you. For the next item on the agenda, I would like to invite forward Ms. Kate Phillips, who is our Fannin County 4H agent and CEC, and she has done a lot of remarkable work with our students and we appreciate that. So tell us what you've been doing.
Is this thing, okay. So, thank you all for having me this evening. I just wanted to take a minute to share everything that's been going on in Fannin County 4H for this past year. So, in the first big activity we had this year was something called project achievement. Projected achievement, especially for the 4th to 6th grade age group, which is what I have highlighted here, is a four to six-minute speech where they are doing research on a topic and presenting that, getting the opportunity to practice public speaking. We took six students from the 4th and 5th graders in the county over to Union County to compete against, about seven different counties were present that day. We had, out of those six, five of them got first place and one of them got second place. So I was extremely proud of all of them. We started working on this in the classroom and they went home and finished this on their own time to be able to go and compete. So I was extremely proud of them. We also have had some, last school year, we had seven students show livestock and raise livestock. This is in conjunction with FFA. We are a joint show team, so a majority of my students are in that 5th grade or below. Two of them in the winter were showing goats. We had one showing sheep and then four were showing pigs. This upcoming school year, we are going to also have seven, but the numbers have slightly changed and some of them have even expanded into showing more than one type of animal, which it already takes a lot of work to show just one animal, but now having to learn skills for a different animal because each one has its own things and its own ways that it goes in the ring. So those seven students are going to be broken down into two of them showing goats, four of them are going to be showing sheep, and then three are swine. There are two main livestock show seasons every year, one being in the fall and one being in the winter. Summer camp, when I was making this, I had just gotten back from summer camp. We took 25 students this year. I was really excited. Last summer, I was only able to take 10, so this was actually a 150% increase. I also had two other adults go with me, both of them volunteers, parents of campers going. One of them was Jennifer Beavers. Her daughters go to West Fannin last school year. And then I also took Officer Jim Burrell as my other volunteer adult. We had a wonderful time. And then I also had one high schooler go as an opportunity to be a teen leader. They had a great time. We didn't have any behavioral issues, so I was very impressed with our students showing how well they are up here in Fannin County. One of the major things that I do throughout the year is I go into all the 4th and 5th grade classrooms in the county and I am preparing mostly science lessons. Our first two of the school year do relate to project achievement and practicing those public speaking skills. Our first one is going to be about picking your presentation, doing your research, how to write that, those five main sections, your introduction, your three main items, and then your conclusion. And then the second one is making your presentation, which is all of those Google Slides skills that they're going to be learning. And then I have different lessons for my 4th and 5th graders based on some of the science standards. So looking through these electricity seeds and plants, microorganisms and erosion are all going to be different hands-on lessons for the 5th graders. And then the catapults and the weather and clouds are going to be related to forced motion and then the weather, they got to make clouds in a bottle to be able to see these as hands-on science experiments because one of 4H's mottos is learn by doing. So hands-on science experiments are something that I'm really passionate about as well. Judging teams, for last school year, we had something called Cotton Bowl and Consumer Judging. We had one participant and the point of Cotton Bowl and Consumer Judging is to make smart consumers making these decisions as you go out into the real world. So she was given four different objects. Last year's objects were socks, speakers, board games, and cereal. So they are giving a situation and it usually has about three or four different things. So for a board game scenario, it's going to say they're looking for two players, these age range, and they need it to be this price. And she had to go in and rank which one's going to be the best to which one's going to be the worst. So I would love to have that team again next year, as well as adding livestock and poultry judging for all of the livestock kids, as well as poultry is one of our bigger commodities here in the state of Georgia. So learning about how our food in the grocery store gets to us is another thing. Now, the big thing that I have on, that I have been working on recently is something called Project Safe. It is shooting sports, but it is shooting awareness, fun, and education. So I am working on making a BB team. Currently, I have one volunteer coach and then I am also going to get certified as a coach. You need two certified coaches in order to have a team. I would still love to have a couple more parents volunteer in order to help this run smoothly, just in case another coach can't make it that day. And due to a grant that a predecessor of mine secured, we actually already have all of the supplies, so the BB guns themselves, the shooting mats, the rolls, everything we need except for the target boxes have already been secured in order for us to have this team. And with the target boxes, my volunteer coach that I have secured is a carpenter and has agreed to make them once I can get my hands on the wood.
Thank you.
So that was that and...
Ms. Phillips, can we, for the BB team, that's a precursor for what would provide our students opportunities to actually go into a rifle competition if we could get BB to be successful, correct?
Yes, so this team would be, they would learn all the safety and all the practices would happen. And then Georgia 4H actually has BB competitions as well for them to go to. And then rifle as well as an older one. And this one, BB is going to be ranging from 4th grade to 9th grade. So unfortunately, it's not open to the 10th, 11th, and 12th graders, but...
But thank you and thank you for your work on it.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions? I'd be more than happy to answer. And as well, all of my contact information is on there as well. That is our office phone, katep@uga.edu is my direct email. And then the UGE email is our office email that'll go to our admin and me as well.
So, Ms. Kate, back in my day, we did, I actually went and competed in archery. They still doing that?
Yes, so all of the Project Safe disciplines that Georgia 4H offers is archery, BB, shotgun, and rifle. So archery is still one of those, but because I already have the BB supplies and it does go down to that 4th grade age range is the reason that we're starting with BB.
That was my first experience with skeet shooting was at 4H camp, so that's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you all for having me.
We actually have a high school student that has gone over and joined the Union County team and she's been quite successful.
As well as, I think there's been about two different Fannin County, one of them may have been homeschooled on the shotgun team as well. And then the sister of the shotgun joined the BB team in Union County last year.
But Ms. Phillips is going to help us make sure that we don't say in Union County anymore in the near future.
Yes, that is going to, that is the goal.
One comment. If that teaches gun safety, that's something that presently is becoming very meaningful.
Thank you so much, Ms. Phillips. Next item on the agenda is central office update and I just have two documents to share with you briefly and they're both with the district leadership structure for this upcoming school year. And I just want to say how proud I am of this district leadership team and our school-based leadership team. And I hope they know, I tell them often, that the good Lord is the one that opened the door for them to be where they're at with their skills and talents and they need to be true to themselves and follow that heart and everything's going to be okay. So extremely proud of them and then that is just the structure of who supervises who in which department. So very proud of this team. And now for some, yes, sir?
While you have that chart up for everyone to see.
Yes, sir.
Having recently gone through the election process and obviously lost, I was truly surprised at the lack of understanding of board operations and roles and responsibilities in an educational system. You'll notice that there is one line between the Fannin County Board of Education and the rest of the system, and that is directly through the superintendent. A lot of comments were made that the Board of Education was lax because they weren't in the classrooms and they weren't interacting with the teachers and they weren't making unannounced visits. This is the chain of command. It's also the map for communications. There is one line between the superintendent and the school system, the Board of Education and school system, and that is directly through the superintendent. And that's my education moment for the evening.
Thank you, sir.
Glad to have you, lady.
Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Connie Huff, will you come forward and tell us about an exciting event coming up?
Good evening, everyone. I think I'm on, it is that time of year again. It's that time of year again for our back-to-school bash and we have some folks who have been working diligently for months and months to get ready for this event. And those folks are our school social worker and licensed clinical social worker and our parent liaisons. And it seems that these ladies just go above and beyond every year to make the event bigger and better and making sure that we have more and more services provided to our families and students to get them ready to come back to school and excited to come back to school. Now, as you gentlemen know, I am all about making sure that we have books and things like that available to our students. That's where one of my passions lies. And Ms. Collis has done a very good job this year of making sure we got those books out to the community. So we are still looking to get books in the hands of students. There are some great food opportunities there, haircuts, eye exams, dental. We've got all sorts of things going on that those ladies in the planning part of this have worked to bring in community partners. And it has been overwhelming in the last couple of years how people will hear about our event and then they are proactively reaching out and asking how they can help and they can contribute. So as we all know, it's not just a blessing to receive, it is also a blessing to be able to give. And our community has been blessed in both ends of this event, in being able to give and receive. So we look forward to that. The date is July 27th and we are at the high school that morning in the gym, so I'm sure the AC will be on because it'll be another scorcher of a day for us all and we will be in there taking care of business. So we hope that you're able to come out and just see the blessings that are going forth. Okay, I wanted to, but yes, yes, they, and there's something they're going to ride. Yeah, yeah, sometimes they worry me a little. So, yes, yes. To add to the entertainment side, as Dr. Ramsey mentioned, petting zoo and a mechanical bull. I promise not to partake of that one. Maybe.
You know, you have a high school principal and a department, a student services department that love kids and are willing to do anything, but I almost have PTSD every time I pick up the phone and Dr. Ramsey says, hey, what do you think about this? And so, because it's usually followed by something that I'm a little bit scared about, but I'm like, I trust you.
Yes, some of you have been around like myself long enough to remember the days back when we did donkey basketball and things like that before people got all crazy about liability. So that mechanical bull just makes me think of that liability aspect again. And then I had a donkey one time that was not cooperative, were trying to let me get on there to do my basketball. So, but, all right, thank you.
How many students do you find that need classes or have a hearing problem?
We, with the screeners that Georgia Mountain Health has done in the past, we have had many, many students that we have found have either, you know, hearing or vision issues. And we are partnering with a project, Georgia Peeps, this year that is going to be there to be more in-depth with some eye exams. I think they had 50 slots available and they had put that out on social media earlier. So I'm not certain how many people have already jumped at those spots because, as you know, being able to get a kiddo to an eye exam and then ready for glasses is quite an endeavor. So we are very thrilled to see how this works and see if we can maybe convince those folks to come back and see us more often.
Immunizations will be available, not that the kids like that very much, but it helps the parents and...
That's right. We'll put that right next to the mechanical bull, maybe. Thank you.
Excellent. So, goes without saying, a few prayers for July 27th. Next item on the agenda, public comment. Mr. Danner, do we have any public comments, sir?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is school governance team update. Dr. Lucas Roof, will you share your information with us, please, sir?
Absolutely. So, we did not have an extremely busy month this month for school governance teams, but we did have two meetings. Blue Ridge Elementary School met June 26th and they definitely accomplished a lot at that meeting when it came to the notable work there. Approved, appointed members and elected vice chair, reviewed family engagement plan, discussed the SGT handbook, reviewed and discussed code of conduct and conflict of interest, and then went over the dates that they will be meeting this year. And also talked about the position of school nurse and went over the mission and beliefs of Blue Ridge Elementary School. So again, busy meeting there. One more item there. Team requested agenda item added to the meeting, tour of classrooms and facilities. East Fannin no meeting, West Fannin no meeting, middle school no meeting, high school did meet. This is the shortest notable work. Was this a full meeting? Was, you must have had somewhere to go or something this one, I don't know.
He was hunting animals for his petting.
But the reason is because there's no fundraiser, field trip or facility use request, which is extremely rare as we know. But we did have some notable work there. Talked about the self-assessment with the SGT and then discussed ways that they could help the school, the different SGT members. Also, I'll always point out, remember that the full minutes of any of our meetings are housed at the individual schools. And then also, board members, when we know for a fact that all of the dates are finalized for their meetings and all of the different members are updated, you gentlemen will receive a copy of that as well so that you know who's on those teams and when they meet.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Roof.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is to approve the annual board planning calendar and I'd also ask Dr. Roof to review that, please.
Absolutely. This is the calendar that we use to help us make sure that we continue to move in the right direction as a school system and as a Board of Education. This is the calendar also that contains all of the items that are required for our board members, for our board to remain an exemplary board. All, you know, a lot goes into it. Of course, a lot more goes into it than what ends up on this piece of paper, but these are the requirements that need to go on this for the planning. The one item that was added this year compared to previous years, if you'll scroll down, Mrs. Collis, right there in the April/May area, approving the board norms. Now, we've done that every year and, but that is now, for the last few years, that's been a requirement for the exemplary board status is to make sure that we go over the board norms. So because of that, we've added that to this planning calendar as well. So that is the one update when you compare last year to this year.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chair, with that, I make a recommendation to approve this presented.
Okay, board, we have a recommendation. Do I have a motion?
You have a motion.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
You have a second.
Thank you, sir. Is there any discussion? All in favor by a raised hand? It is unanimous.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is to approve to table board policy G A R H B, paid parental leave. Dr. Roof, will you review that for us, please, sir?
Absolutely. And so this policy, this is coming down the pipeline from, you know, different Senate bills, House bills. We always get an update with all those different bills and law changes. And so this policy is reflecting a law change. This policy has been, or this version, this draft, has been vetted by GSBA, the Georgia School Board Association, and it's also been vetted by law firm PKKN. So we have, you know, had, we've gone through the proper vetting process. So now, what we will do, if you gentlemen approve this, is we will table this for a month and then bring it back, table it for public review for a month, and then we'll bring it back for the following board meeting to see about approving it officially. So the changes here in item three, you'll notice that the maximum amount of paid parental leave that may be taken by an employee during a rolling 12-month period, that has moved from 120 hours to 240 hours. So again, that's an increase. That reflects the law change. And then the rest of the items there, you'll see the updates. Number four there, going over the fact that the paid parental leave under state law shall run concurrently with any leave provided under federal law and shall run concurrently with any other applicable unpaid leave that may be available to the eligible employee. Item five is an update. Those are, these are all additions. So item five there talks about the responsibility of the employee. Item six talks about the responsibility of the superintendent or the superintendent's designee when it comes to this policy. And then item seven is discussing how an employee who submits false or fraudulent documentation when it comes to this could be subject to termination. And then item eight, if approved, at the following board meeting, this policy is essentially retroactive and would actually be effective retroactively July 1st, 2024. So those are the, those are the updates to this policy, again, vetted by GSBA.
Thank you.
So we're asking for approval to table it for public review for a month.
Mr. Chair, I make a recommendation to approve as presented.
Thank you, ma'am. Board, there is a recommendation to be approved. Can I have a motion?
So move.
Have a motion, is there a second?
You have a second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor by a raised hand? It is unanimous.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Dr. Roof. Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is facilities update. Chief Operations Officer Darren Danner will share those with us.
As that's pulled up, last month, we talked about work orders, maintenance completed. They did hit the 2,000 mark, 2,003 work orders from July 1 of '23 to 6/30 of '24. And then as of July 1 to today, 69 work orders being completed. So busy time for the maintenance department. Salto, I show this to you every year for the calendar year. This is again from July 1 of '23 to June 30 of '24. 616,093 times a key card has been used to open a locked door. So comparing that to last year, it was 584,486. So again, you know, we've put some money into Salto, but again, it's making our building secure. So again, just always like to share that with you. Thank you, Ms. Collis.
Thank you.
I don't want to instill the thunder for the schools, so again, I'll let them show you what's going on with all their stuff during their type of things.
All right. Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda, it's been a long time coming, and that's to approve guaranteed maximum price of the GMP for the Fannin County High School Athletic Complex. And Mr. Darren Danner will present the proposal. And then we also have Drew Watson and Henry Pineda here with us to answer any questions.
Board, again, last month, we showed this, again, everything 1 through 13 is what has been put out to bid by Born and Watson, by the design of Henry Pineda with Rowan Associates. Again, we have, we've talked about it, we've talked about it, and now it's time to go. Go ahead, Ms. Collis. Again, just a very brief, no, scroll, scroll, Ms. Collis. Nope, scroll, Ms. Collis. There you go. No, you're good. Again, it's roughly 26 acres. It's just shy of 26, 25.7 as best as I can draw. Go ahead, Ms. Collis. Baseball, softball complex, multi-purpose annex, which is what's shown there. Again, that's a two-level upstairs is a multi-purpose room for wrestling and also for anything that we need for the high school. Downstairs is a weight room. Go ahead, Ms. Collis. There's an example of what that weight room is going to look like, 20 weightlifting cages, where we've currently got seven. About 7,500 square feet. This is the baseball, softball, press box. Again, it's two stories. Baseball, softball is separated, but again, exactly the same when it comes to size internally. And that is a hitting facility. A hitting facility houses softball and baseball along with any other sports that has any type of contact, whether it be tennis or handball or pickleball, whenever it becomes a GHSA sport very soon. And so again, very excited about it. And then here's an overall plan again. There's the baseball, softball, the hitting facility, and then that just shows you again what we have left over. The gray areas at the bottom of the screen and the roads there, again, a lot of possibilities coming down the pipe. And so saying all that, Ms. Collis, if you'll go to number two. The, nope, next one. All right, so Born and Watson, again, put, since they're our CM at risk, they do all the bidding for us. And so again, this is a very detailed spreadsheet. Go ahead and scroll, Ms. Collis. Go ahead and scroll, Ms. Collis. Going anywhere from land moving to masonry to sheet rock to, or excuse me, gypsum board. See, I'm learning new terms. Gypsum board is sheet rock there for the layperson such as myself. And again, but this is everything. So if you'll scroll all the way down to the bottom, there are some allowances, there are some contingencies in there, and also the CM fee. And then, Ms. Collis, if you'll go to the memo. So the guaranteed max price for the athletic complex, $31,946,469. That will be paid for out of SPOST. After speaking with Drew this week, T.W. Phillips, who won the dirt moving, if this is approved tonight, they will do their own one-foot topo, even though we've already done a one-foot topo. And they should be, Drew, I don't want to steal your thunder, when do you...
They'll start surveying early next week and then move equipment later.
So we should be getting some equipment on property within the next two weeks.
So with board approval of the GMP?
With board approval.
We could start.
Yeah, with board approval.
And to clarify, Mr. Danner, that GMP includes the dirt work for these current projects, for the future project of CTAE, the roadway that would provide access all around the property, the fields, those buildings and the courts.
Yes. Ms. Collis, go back up to the first slide on this one. Yep, keep going. Keep, there you go. So everything you pretty much see here, 13, we've got two 13s and we've got two number 12s. 13 is just reserved areas for whatever we want to do with it. 13 is taking a little, over half of the visitor side parking lot that's going to be leveled off. It will be paid for more parking that we currently have now, the football field, and then also for future use. 12, again, all that's going to be graded level, be ready to build the CTA facility that Henry and I have already discussed. We've not put, pinned to the paper yet, but again, a lot of discussions have been made on it. And Henry's got his little scratch pad out there right now. Because again, we've been talking about this for several months as well. But yeah, to answer your question, Ms. Dillard, yes, that is everything that you see here.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Y'all just said that the road is around this property, not the whole 100, 200 acres.
That is correct. That is correct. Mr. Dewey's there on the east side of this drawing where that number four is, that connects to Industrial Boulevard, where we finished our drain, that little level area, not the road going down to, but that top level where the drain is, that's pretty much where that road is. And then if you'll notice, it goes all the way to our existing tennis court parking lot over behind the PAC. So down about the, think about the little creek bed that's down there. So there'll be a road from Industrial Boulevard all the way to the existing tennis court.
That means buses can come and go.
If need be, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you for clarifying that, Mr. Dewey.
Yes, sir.
I have one quick question.
Yes, sir.
Would you, or just a request, I guess, would you just briefly review the process that you went through to facilitate the prioritization of these projects, the surveying that you conducted?
This one or the survey we done back in 21, 22? When this purchase, when this property was purchased in May of '21, I think it was, Dr. Guatney charged me to put out a survey after speak with y'all. I begged him not to do a survey because, you know, surveys make people mad or they make people happy. But anyway, that survey, if I remember correctly, there was 238 people took the survey. And the most, the highest option or the highest thing that people wanted was a baseball, softball complex. Out of that 238, the second one, there were some consolidations, there was some renovations. But again, the most valuable or the highest rated was a baseball, softball complex.
Thank you.
And then from that point, it goes all the way down the list.
And Mr. Danner, we'll be able to start with this project with funds left in this current SPOST and then utilize some of the funding from the other spots, SPOST that the community just passed for us, but not using it in its entirety for this particular project.
Absolutely. This project, again, it will deplete SPOST 5. SPOST 6, I don't even think we've started collecting yet.
We won't.
So again, we will finish, we will finish SPOST 5 with this, and then we will finish this project with the beginning of SPOST 6. And again, then we'll continue to finish collecting in SPOST 6, correct.
This is not affecting people's taxes.
No, sir.
This is entirely.
No, sir.
SPOST money.
Correct.
Yes, sir, right now, it's totally budgeted with SPOST money, with enough room and SPOST to still continue our maintenance and other projects that we have. Yes, sir.
And Mr. Dewey, so I made sure I said just less than 26 acres, but it's just less than 26 acres. I knew you was going to ask me that. We will, if this is approved, we will be envious.
All right, Mr. Chair, I make the recommendation to approve as presented.
Thank you, ma'am. Board, we have a recommendation to approve the maximum guaranteed maximum price for the Fannin County High School Athletic Complex. Do I have a motion?
You have a motion.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second? I have a second.
Third.
Third.
Fourth. Good luck, Stephanie.
Is there any discussion?
Got a five.
Got a five. All in favor by raised hand? It is unanimous.
Drew, Henry, start making phone calls. Start making phone calls. And again, I want to publicly thank Henry and Drew for being here tonight. You know, they don't have to be here, but again, they asked, could they come? I said absolutely. But again, we worked well together for the last couple of years, and at least for two more years, we'll be working together as well. But again, I'm very confident in their ability to get this thing done and it be top-notch.
And I'd like to take a minute to thank the board for being fiscally responsible to help us get to this point, to be, to have the opportunity to do this without, with SPOST, without compromising the integrity of our personnel or our instructional resources. And we are blessed, and I thank each of you for that and for your service over the years and making sure that happens.
I love to use Ms. Doss's comment. This is Fannin. Fannin County.
Yes, sir. All righty, Mr. Danner, you're going to have a long night because I think the rest of them's yours.
All right, these are going to be quick.
Next items approved to apply the state, for state COPS funding for West Fannin Elementary Dishwasher.
Just a reminder, the COPS program is a capital outlay project by the state, the Georgia DOE. They, you can use funds for certain things. Ms. Williams and Maintenance Department have pretty much said the West Fannin Dishwasher is almost done. And so again, we have $20,000 from, that we are eligible for if we apply for a application using COPS money. So again, while I'm asking for permission to make that application, we'll get quotes and bids. The remaining of the, of course, that $20,000 is not going to pay for all of it, it's going to pay roughly half of it. So again, if this gets approved and the COPS probably gets approved, then we'll replace the dishwasher at West.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I make a recommendation to approve as presented.
Board, we have a recommendation. Do I have a motion?
You have a motion.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor by raised hand? It is unanimous.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is to approve, pursue a construction manager at risk for HVAC. And Mr. Danner, will you explain a little bit what construction manager at risk?
Construction manager at risk is it takes us out of the picture. We don't have to put it out to bid, we don't have to put it on procurement, we hire somebody to do all that for us, just like Born and Watson is our CM at risk for athletic project. So again, I'm asking for permission to pursue a CM at risk for the HVAC replacement at West, East, and the middle school, the high school new gym. Back in August the 10th of '23, we got approval from COPS to use funds to help go to that. East Fannin, we are eligible for $344,553. At West, we're eligible for $446,287. The high school gym, we're eligible for $447,085. So if we do, even though I'm just asking for permission to do a CM at risk, we can name a CM at risk, but we still don't have to do this project. But if we do this, then we can use those funds from the DOE to help pursue this and help get it. And again, it's about half what it's going to cost.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I make a recommendation to approve as presented.
Thank you, ma'am. I'd like to make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor by raised hand? It is unanimous.
All right. Agenda item 15, Mr. Danner, approve to pursue construction manager at risk for Fannin County Middle School driveway.
If you've been at the middle school...
Roadway.
Roadway. If you've been at the middle school during parent pickup or drop-off, it is a nightmare. So again, we have, we've talked to Henry about this, we've already had a tow pull done. We've not done anything except talk about this. But if we add a new driveway going down to, down to the bottom of the hill, down there to the very south, Ms. Collis, to the right, that's the Lance Parking Lot, I think it is. So again, I've talked to Zach Ratcliffe, we went there, he doesn't see any issues with it. There's a creek there to the left. He says as long as you stay 50 foot off of it, the way this is drawn, that's about 85 feet from the creek. And doing so, the old driveway, to the best of my calculations, using the old traffic pattern, we can get 163 vehicles there. So if you've been there during that time, 163, then we got about 70 out in the roadway. So with this new traffic pattern, using same everything else, two lanes going in, one lane going out, we can fit 249 vehicles there before it starts backing up on 76.
And still leave it open for first responders, Lord forbid, if that was to happen during a high-traffic time.
If we get to do this, we can, after we train people, the existing driveway, that's just going to be for buses only. So again, but that's going to take some training. But again, a very big safety concern that we can do. Again, we own all that property there, and again, it's just not being used. But again, this will put that property use, and again, it will be a good safety as well.
And Mr. Danner, is this an exact rendering of what will happen, or is it just a sketch?
Oh, no, 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 no. That is my renderings, and then we'll let, we'll let Mr. Pineda do the actual there. So, but again, so once it gets drawn, we can get some estimates and cost on it before we pursue. But again, I'm just asking for a CM at risk in case we do pursue this.
And Mr. Danner, will we need to get GDOT involved in this project?
This is a county road, so we only need to get county approval, and that's already been done.
Thank you, sir. And, Mr. Chair, with that, I'd like to make a recommendation to approve as presented.
Okay, board, we have a recommendation. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Thank you, sir. And is there any discussion?
I just want to say it's a long time needed. Long time.
All in favor by raised hand? It is unanimous.
It's my goal to keep Mr. Danner and his team busy for the next little bit. Item number 16, approve to pursue construction manager at risk for show barn. Mr. Danner?
We had a meeting with a gentleman who pretty much wants to donate funds. He wants to purchase, he wants to build a show barn. Now, this is not an ag barn that we have, this is what's considered a pole barn to hold cattle. I'm not a cattle person. When I first heard of a pole barn, again, I thought of poles with a shed over it, it is nothing like that. So it's nothing like that. This is a high-dollar thing that, but we can't do cattle now. So again, I, again, I'm just asking for permission to pursue a CM at risk, to pursue this, but the gentleman who wants to donate the money, we're still working with him on exactly what he wants and what size. It'll go on our property, it'll go on the side of the road, not where the ag facility is, not behind the greenhouse, but across the creek over by the little wind tunnel by feed fanning. There's ample room over there to have not only pasture, but also this show barn. So again, we're still in the process of trying to get all the details, but again, it shouldn't cost the school system any money. If it does, it's going to be very little, very little.
Is it heated?
No, sir. It'll just have fans and that sort of thing. The pigs will still stay in the Taj Mahal there at the ag facility.
And any fund to support this project would be to improve our, maybe our own infrastructure to, for roadways and stuff to, you know, increase access to the facility.
Correct. Now, this is just to pursue a CM at risk to move forward if we choose to.
I will tell you that there's great interest in this project by the Young Farmers Group. We have people willing to donate cattle that can be used for show animals and further that educational process regarding livestock.
Very true.
Mr. Chair, I make a recommendation to approve as presented.
Thank you, ma'am. We have a recommendation. Do I have a motion?
You have a motion.
Thank you, sir. Is there, have a second?
You have a second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor by raised hand? It is unanimous.
Thank you. The financial items tonight will be covered by Mr. Darren Danner in place of Ms. Nguyen. And next item on the agenda is item 17, approve district financial report. Mr. Danner?
All right, so here's our general fund. Again, go ahead, Ms. Collis, just scroll. There's our capital, our capital funds, that's our SPOST, special revenues, and then our nutrition. And again, board, y'all have had this prior to, so again, if you've got any questions on that, Ms. Nguyen will be back on Monday.
Actually, board, I will almost pay y'all to have a few questions for Mr. Danner, please.
Does that have to be, that has to be approved, doesn't it, Ms. Dillard?
Yes.
What's our liquidity ratio?
I'll defer that question till Monday.
What percent of the federal budget are we in? How much are we? Just kidding. All right, Mr. Chair, I make a recommendation to approve as presented.
Thank you, ma'am. We have a recommendation. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
You have a second.
Thank you, sir. Is there any discussion? All in favor by raised hand? It is unanimous.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the SPOST update. Mr. Danner?
SPOST update, again, an increase of 1.3% for May, $852,931.50. Again, very blessed to live in Fannin County.
Thank you.
I love to talk about the Chamber of Commerce. Another person or another entity is our local newspaper is very supportive of helping our school system with that.
Yes, I agree.
Very true.
It's the handsome man sitting on the front row.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is to approve spending resolution for August 2024. Mr. Danner?
Board, y'all are very accustomed to this because we've not set the budget yet, we don't have our numbers from the county yet. Again, just to prove the spending resolution so we can continue business as normal, not to exceed 1/12 of the minute budget. But again, we've done this for as many years that I've been at the county office.
Mr. Chair, make a recommendation to approve as presented.
Thank you, ma'am. I moved to approve the spending resolution for August 2024. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor by raised hand? It is unanimous.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, Mr. Chair, is approve the 2024 millage adoption timeline. Mr. Danner?
The August 8th board meeting, again, the board will be presented with a tentative millage rate, August 14th. August fourteenth, it is for advertisement. And then, and then a call meeting on August 22nd at 5:00 PM to actually set the millage rate. And again, that has to be approved. And again, that will be advertised by law.
Mr. Chair, I make a recommendation to approve as presented.
Board, we have a recommendation. Is there a motion?
You have a motion.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I'd just say I'd like to thank the board for their consideration on the date change for the call meetings. I appreciate that, though.
All in favor by a raised hand? It is unanimous.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is personnel, and I'll give you just a minute to get your personnel sheets. Everybody ready? Alright. First two items on personnel are recensions. And we'll take those collectively if no one objects. And that is Heather Davis and Katie Exum, effective for the school year 2024, 2025. Mr. Chair, I make that recommendation.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor by a raised hand? It is unanimous.
Thank you. Next item on personnel is resignations. We have one, Brandy Morgan, effective six twenty-seven, 2024. Mr. Chair, I make that recommendation.
I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor? It is unanimous.
Thank you. And next one is recommendation for professional staff pending completion of paperwork, background check, and training requirements, and release of her contract from Union County, which has been agreed upon with superintendents, between the superintendents. And that is Ms. Kayla Hemphill, professional staff, effective school year 2024, 2025. Mr. Chair, I make that recommendation.
Is there a motion?
There is a motion.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? It is unanimous.
Thank you. I'd like to take the next three classified staff collectively if there's not any objections. Okay, it's all pending completion of paperwork, background check, and training requirements. And that's Elizabeth Holsonback, Amanda Reese, and Morgan Rhodes. All classified, all effective, school year 2024, 2025. Mr. Chair, I make that recommendation.
Thank you, ma'am. Board, we have a recommendation. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? It is unanimous.
Thank you. Next recommendations are for substitute employees pending completion of paperwork, background check, and training requirements. I'll take the first three for substitute transportation collectively if there's not any objections. Okay, that is Carson Collis, John Deckert, April Hoskins, substitute transportation, all effective, school year 2024, 2025. Mr. Chair, I make that recommendation.
I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor? It is unanimous.
Thank you. The next set I'd like to take collectively for substitute teacher. They're all pending completion of paperwork, background check, and training requirements. Any objections to the collective? Okay. That would be Carson Collis, Faith Dean, Harriet La Mer, Madison Mitchum, and Emma Queen, substitute teacher, all school year 2024, 2025. Mr. Chair, I make that recommendation.
Board, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion and is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor by a raised hand? It is unanimous.
Thank you. That concludes the personnel sheet, and now it is superintendent comments. And I want to take a minute to, I spoke earlier a little bit about the fiscal responsibility of this board, but I want to publicly tell this board how much I appreciate them as individual men and as members of this board. Your support of this school system and your integrity is immense. And it does not go unnoticed, and it is appreciated. I'd like to take a moment to recognize, I found out today that Mr. Cecil Davis, former superintendent of Fannin County School System Pass. And I'd like to say that we're sending prayers to his family and prayers of gratitude for all that he did for our country by serving in the Army, and then by serving this community as a shop teacher or ag teacher, an administrator, and of course, as superintendent. So prayers and peace to his family. The back-to-school bash on Saturday, July 27th, nine to three. It is amazing to come out and see all the service that the people of this community are willing to give our children. Kate Phillips, thank you for all of your work that you do with our kids. Thanks to all the teachers that worked hard all summer at summer camps and practices. Can't wait. New teachers are coming. Our former teachers are coming, and then they're followed by the kiddos that will just come in loud and proud and just, you know, make us all wish we'd slept an extra week this summer. And I just want everyone to remember to take at least a moment every day to praise the Lord for all the things that we have. Mr. Chair?
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Brown?
Mr. Chairman, we've got a couple of gentlemen that traveled considerable distance to be here tonight that play pivotal roles in our construction projects. We might give them an opportunity to speak. I'm not sure if they have anything they'd like to address with the board. Gentlemen?
For one, I appreciate your confidence in allowing us to complete your athletic complex project. We're really excited to get started.
I have to say it's really, really a pleasure and a privilege. And we're humbled and honored to be and associate your partner. We are very grateful to work in Fannin County. So thank you, and it's been a great team to coordinate things with.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Mr. Gallaway?
Sure. On that note, I'll just make my comments to y'all. I want to say I appreciate all the work that y'all have put into it and what y'all presented to us and how, how, how you listen to each and everybody's concerns and desires and, and working with Darren. I know it's been a long process, but I do appreciate the amount of time that y'all have put into it. A lot that nobody ever sees or ever hears. All they see is maybe a three or four minute presentation here, then, then they, you get a name or whatever. But I do appreciate it. I know there's a lot of long hours, a lot of phone calls, especially with you, Mr. Darren. I appreciate you. Things have been a ton of work going there. I don't think anybody realizes the amount of time that's been spent on that. And I want to, Allison, I know you do, definitely. But I, I, I truly appreciate how well and how wonderful that this has all come together. And I'm so excited for the citizens and our students also for this. The high school is gonna, it's gonna be something to, to be reckoned with. I don't think there's anything gonna be like it much in the state. So I, and I am very proud of it and proud to be a part of it. Thank you guys for all that y'all do. And thank you for everyone that showed up, and God bless y'all.
Mr. Dewise?
I think I'll try to build on what Chad just said, except I'm going to aim, aiming at anyone that's in education, starting with the top, with you people that spend twenty-six hours a day. Your life is made into it. You really don't have time for a life yourself. You give it to our kids. And I've had the privilege of observing and getting to know so many beautiful people that have a heart that, I don't know how you could put it in words other than they give their life so that somebody else's life can, can be so much better. If you weigh in your heart the difference in a child that comes from a home that's poor, and they have the benefits of the rich or the wise or whatever you want to call it, they can go from there to be the president of the United States or a multitude of other things. But it's because of y'all, what you do daily, the little tidbits of miracles that you hand out each day. You folks up here, y'all, y'all touch all three thousand students. A teacher touches a room full every day, in and out. But you guys work your way to the top so you can really dedicate. And I don't guess there's any word that we're covered except to say thank you. Y'all are well appreciated, and our kids, someday they'll realize too who you are.
Thank you, Mr. Dewise, Mr. Gallaway. I'll, I'll just continue on with Mr. Dewise's theme here. I believe it was Frederick Douglass that stated that the road to economic success and independence went right through the schoolhouse. You folks are changing lives one at a time, every single day. Gentlemen, with the construction side, we thank you. You've done such excellent work for us in the past, and we look forward to continuing our relationship. We've got the core of our administration here tonight. I have such great respect for each and every one of you. You do fantastic work, and our, our children in Fannin County are the beneficiaries of that. So thank you for all you do. It is an honor to serve.
I guess it's my turn. I'd like to thank everybody here, especially our principals and anybody associated with school, especially our visitors. And I want you to remember the, the Davis family in your prayers. Like Ms. Dillard said, he's a former superintendent. He was a friend of mine, so please remember his family in your prayers. Back-to-school bash, I wasn't able to go last year, but it sounded like fun, and that's where I want to be. I may crawl on that bull, I don't know. I said I may. I didn't say I would.
Dr. Ramsey, it's all your fault.
Anyhow, the most thing that I'm excited about is our new complex. It's just like this building we're sitting in. We needed this years ago. Bus garage. We needed it years ago. And when we get finished with this complex, and if I live twenty more years, I can go over there and say, we needed that a long time before it was done. Our children who play sports and stuff like that deserve a place to practice that we're going to give them. Darren? Son, you're just amazing. Appreciate you to the end of the earth. Dr. Roof, congratulations. I saw you in the paper. You run a race. How about that?
Out front.
Yeah, how about that?
Setting the pace.
Hey, we got runners in this place. We got runners. I just want to remember, we are Fannin. I don't think, I, I've seen pictures of Colorado, Colorado. I've seen pictures here and pictures of there. They may look better than Fannin County, but I'll tell you something. In my opinion, there is no place on God's earth that's better than Fannin County for me. And to that, I say, thank you, good night, and God bless you.
To you gentlemen as well, I'd like to thank you because the quality of workmanship that y'all produced here for us has just been amazing. So I, I thank you for your excellence in what you do because it's, it's definitely a prized piece. And so we expect the same great service over there. And super excited about that. The, the property wasn't easy to get. It's hard to find property attached to a school system, and so we were blessed to be able to, to get that. I'm thankful for that. And just following up for a moment with our administration, our teachers, those that are online, that are listening in, that work and labor for those kids. I, I tell you, when you walk down the halls and you see the effort that the teachers are, are putting in. I was in a, I was in a meeting with some GSBA and an attorney there talked about the service. And so people tell me, as a Marine, thank you for your service. But it really made an impact when they were talking about that. And I want to say thank you for your service because it's, it's amazing. I was talking to an Union County school teacher yesterday, and the passion that she talks about going to school and teaching and seeing, seeing their little minds just start to work and to imagine a future and to see them actually doing some, accomplishing something. And they, and they have a goal, and I just, I just can't thank you enough for the, the service that you do in giving up, as Mr. Dewise said, giving up your families at times. I mean, being an administrator just takes it to a whole new level. I know, I've seen them. They, they want to be there till they get there. And you feel the load, you feel the weight. And I'm a person of faith, and it says, you go from glory to glory, and you think that you, you want to be raised up. And then you get there and find out you got to have some great big shoulders to carry that weight. So I, I thank you, and I, I won't go on with that anymore. But to lead into that, Ms. Tara Cantrell and Ms. Sheena Reimer, they're listed on there for that back-to-school bash. But man, them ladies do so much more, so much more. Not just in the school system, outside the school system. They're, they're always helping people, and they're never out here to be seen, but they're always involved. And so I'm, I'm very thankful for them. And again, Officer Tony, thank you for what you do. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Nobody wants to go home.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor by a raised hand? Thank you. You are dismissed.